I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners staff meeting of October the 26th, and we'll get started. We have-
A few things on our agenda, but very important items. Our first, well, why don't we introduce ourselves first?
Hi, I'm Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Commission.
Good afternoon, I'm Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
My pleasure, Mr. Director of Work.
Thank you so much, Stephanie Summer Odomas, President of the Board. Our first agenda item is an advance number five budget adjustment. We'll start out with that one, as it relates to Finley Market Parking Garage.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is an advance into the Finley Market Parking Garage project as we prepare to finalize the acquisition of property and then release the first rounds of bids for our, the bid packages for construction and initial pre-construction of the garage. This puts 8.5 million into the project, just so we can complete acquisition of property and begin, and have an appropriation present, so that we can begin deep foundation work, driving piles for the garage, that type of thing, and to make sure that we can advance on that quickly. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry, Phil Beck, our project executive is not here today, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for any questions. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question I did get to ask our administrator privately, but just wanted to kind of make sure that information gets out. So the property right now, we do not have the property. We are trying to acquire it, and this will, this amount will allow us to acquire the property to build a garage at Finley Market. Because that's the part I was a little, I was confused, because I thought we already had the acquisition of the property. So do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So we've had the property under contract, but have not closed on it. So this will allow us to close on that property, not for all, but for a portion of this amount, so that the appropriation of 8.5 will allow us to conclude the property acquisition, but also put money into the project, so that we can start with bid packages on the remainder of design and construction.
Okay. And this was put together, I guess, in 2019, and could you maybe just talk, you were talking about a little bit about, we had wanted to acquire, because I thought we already owned the property, but we didn't. Can you talk just a little about, someone might be watching, say, "Well, I thought we voted," I wasn't here, but it was voted on in 2019, and you don't have acquisition of the property. Maybe talk about what we have been working on, and why it has taken so long to get ownership of the property.
Yeah, so this was the, the acquisition and the development of two garages in the over-the-rime, the West End area was part of, both in agreement to help support the operations of Cincinnati's MLS franchise, FC Cincinnati, but also in accordance with board policy, to make sure we were doing that in a way that, number one, helped with traffic flow concerns in the West End, and also with economic development concerns, and the need for additional structured parking in the, in the over-the-rime Finley Market area. So the property that we are exploring, that we plan to close on, is property that we have had designs on for a while now. It has just taken longer than anticipated to ultimately close on, on the property. So we had hoped to have this under, under closing about a month or two ago. It's taken a little bit longer, but we're finally to that point today.
Thank you. And then the current owner of the property is who?
It is, the official, it's the model group, but they may be under a different ownership name on that property. So I don't know exactly what shows up on the, on the legal deed, but we, the model group is who we're entering into the, the contract with.
And so we transferred this today, we'll have ownership today, or this week?
We will close on, we will close on the property today, correct?
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Let me add just a little bit of context related to this garage, because, you know, a couple years ago, we were asked to support the FC initiative for the stadium down the West End, and the city said, or the county, rather, the county said, "We will help with infrastructure, we will build a garage to accommodate 1,000 spots. However, we want to make sure there's a community benefit related to whatever we build." And so we built a garage in the West End, and it's just over 800, it's about 830 spots. And then we said, "We're going to do the remainder, the difference between that and 1,000, over at this Finley Market location," because what we knew was that there was, there's a great need in that area, and there has been for many years, related to Finley. But there's some residential development going on there, there's some commercial development going on there, and we wanted to make sure we had parking infrastructure at that location to serve the community, in addition to, you know, serving our obligation to FC. And so that's why we split it, there were a lot of iterations of this when we first talked about it a couple of years ago, where, where we were going to put it, what sizing there would be. But the Finley Garage has been always on the radar, to make sure that, again, we, we make sure that we've got the community benefit portion of these garages moving forward. So I do have a question related to the cost. So my recollection is that the cost of the property was 2 million-ish, and so this is a higher amount than that, and I know it's about some of what we'll need to have in place moving forward for the preliminary work on the property. What is the total cost of the garage?
So until we complete design, we won't have a final cost, but we typically, for a parking garage project, we typically estimate between an average of 25,000, but up to 30,000 per space. So we're ultimately looking somewhere in the $17 million range for this particular facility. But this, the total amount here, you're correct, Commissioner, is a portion of acquisition, which is around 2.1, 2.2 million. The rest is just to put into the project to start with bid packages, so that we can move forward and advance the project.
And also, I just want to be clear, that this is ultimately coming out of the parking revenues?
Yes.
So this is, these are not ultimately general fund dollars, these are parking revenue dollars that we used in the West End, for the West End Garage, and now we're using for the Finley Garage. And I want to note also that the, over-the-rime Community Council voted in favor of this project, I think it was last night?
Believe so.
Yeah, so we've got community support, and Phil Beck has done a lot of charrettes related to this one, and brought in a lot of partners, to make sure we get it right. So that's, it's helpful, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I remember hearing about this when I first began office here, and community input was so important, and we continue to have some concerns, and I know our administration has been reaching out to those people. I just got a couple calls a couple weeks ago about it, but I think we resolved most of them, and of course, the businesses are really excited, more people can come and park and spend more time, so I think this is, will be a win-win for us. So with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this item, item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Madam President. To the questions here, as we continue to refine design based upon the feedback of the community that we received in over-the-rime, the approval of the over-the-rime historic, or the city's Historic Preservation Council, we'll come back to the Board and keep the Board apprised on, on cost parameters, that type of thing, and certainly discuss all of those with the Board as we move forward on it.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask too, I'd like to know, as we're going into our budget, I want to know a lot of, I want to know the balances and restricted funds, and what they could be used for. I know we hear, we, we build a lot of parking garages here at the county, but I would like to know what those are. I know that there are some obligations to those spots when there's a sporting event, we don't get any money off of those days. But would like to know what those restricted funds, I am aware of the past board you guys were on, making the decision to bring something into the community versus just building one garage. I think that is good, so I'm very familiar and understanding. I think today, the thing that shocked me is that we did not have, we did have ownership of the property since 2019, I guess this was just, so I was wondering, why would I be voting on ownership of the property? I thought we already had it, because we had designs and so forth in front of us. So I appreciate the administrator letting people know why it took so long to get the ownership when money was there, and why it was a complex, difficult situation. So that helped out, and again, I'd like to know some of those restricted funds, what's available. I know we had, we sold some bonds, and just to see what other things that might be available, available that we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if you could-
Yes.
Very quickly, so in the budget that the Board ultimately receives, it'll be a consolidated all-funds budget, and to Vice President Reese's point, there will be a description and detail and a write-up on each and every restricted fund that we have. Certainly, if the Board desires more information, we can go into more, into more detail, but there will be something on every restricted fund for your reference in the upcoming budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number two, which is a comprehensive report from Port Authority. Laura Bruner, President and CEO, welcome.
Thank you. Is there a, if I take this off, or do you want me to?
Sure, uh-huh.
Thank you.
You're far enough away.
Okay. All right, can I keep my watch here? Madam President, Commissioners, it's great to be with you. I appreciate this opportunity to address you. As you said, I think a good word to describe this is comprehensive, to take a step back and take a look at the overall operations of the land bank. As you know, the three of you are among the Board, along with Treasurer Jill Schiller. You represent four of the nine Board members. The composition of the Board is set by the Higher Vice Code, the, each of the specifications for Board membership there. Landbanks were formed just about 10 years ago. The first landbank in the country, to my knowledge, was in Detroit, and then the next one was in Cleveland. So Ohio was right behind Michigan in addressing the need for an organization, a, a public entity with the powers that landbanks have, in response to the foreclosure crisis and the quantity of properties that were stuck, stuck for a number of reasons, including mortgage foreclosure due to the subprime housing crisis that we all faced immediately preceding that. You can see here now that nearly every county in the state has a landbank. The pink are those that are in formation right now. Generally, it's, they've been rapidly forming over the last 10 years. So what happened here in Hamilton County is that in October of 2011, then County Treasurer Robert Garing incorporated the landbank. It is a duty of the treasurer in any county to do so. I started at the port in January of 2012, and at, within a couple of weeks, the landbank board was formed, and at my, within my first month of starting at the port, then the landbank board approached the port and request of our management of the organization. And that was done, I think motivated for two reasons. One of them fiscal prudence, so that we wouldn't have two organizations in the county with very similar powers. It's a lot of administrative duplication of costs to have management. Due to the complexity of the landbank, it needs a lot of different skills, but really not, especially at its formation, full-time in any one of those. It couldn't have afforded a full-time controller, CFO, marketing. So it was prudent then to say, "Well, we're going to combine those in one's professional staff at the port." And then there was also a decision made to leverage the powers of the landbank, so that it wouldn't be just residential. Many of the port authorities, or many of the landbanks in the state focused primarily or exclusively on residential real estate. And from the beginning, there was a hope that we could unstick commercial and industrial property as well as the residential property. So the purpose of the landbank, we've got, I, I put these in two different buckets. One of them is, I call defense, and the other is offense. So this is the defense, to acquire and stabilize vacant, vacant is a very key word here, blighted, abandoned, and tax delinquent property. And we do that to reduce crime. Vacant properties are often, almost always, crime hotspots. To increase surrounding property values, being next door to a vacant, delinquent property brings down neighboring property values. And then it's important also, we have from the very beginning stabilized important historic structures for future development. So that defense there is if they weren't stabilized, they would demolish through neglect. So those are three things that the landbank does for defensive reasons. And then very importantly, is, the offense is to spur economic development activities, to improve quality of life. We do that to revitalize business districts and housing markets. And one important underpinning of this is that public ownership allows for patience and strategic disposition. We'll talk more about all of these, but these are the basic principles of any landbank. I will say that we spend more of our time and energy on the offensive strategic dispositions, not just the maintenance of properties. So this is really where it comes down to. This, I think, is the most important slide, even though there are a few words on here and no pictures. But these are the areas where I feel the Board is responsible for holding us accountable. These, our results come in these two categories. Our stewardship of troubled properties. How responsive are we being to the communities throughout the county that reach out to us, asking for help with their troubled properties? And then how well are we managing them? That is a very important part of our mission. We spend an incredible amount of money in that area of stewardship. In our 2021 budget, we had $900,000 in property maintenance, $240,000 in demolition, and $300,000 in stabilization. So we're spending a lot of money on the inventory of properties that we hold. The second one, and really where the fun is, and where the impact, the long-term impact for our county is, is in the disposition. We share with you at each one of our quarterly Board meetings, some examples, some stories of properties that we, we have disposed of. We take great care, we have a lot of due diligence with regard to our dispositions. We have applications that potential buyers must complete. We are careful to make sure that the plans that they have for the property are in conformity with the communities in which that property sits. We make sure that they've got reasonable cost estimates, that they've got funding for it, and that they have provided us with a timeline for the redevelopment. And we do all that because what we want is the property be returned to productive value. Back on the tax rolls, what we don't want to do is just flip properties to somebody that's going to sit on them for two, five, or 10 years, waiting for the market to change to make a lot of money. Our goal is to hold impatiently in the public sector until we've got somebody that's ready to put it back into productive use. And so our results really fit into these two categories. How well are we managing property and providing the customer service around that? And then how carefully and strategically are we disposing of property? So I, sharing with you, you see snippets of this in your quarterly Board meetings, but probably not as many as I'm going to show you right now, to, to give you a flavor for what a landbank property is when we acquire it. These properties come, are prone to everything from fires and fleas, to rats and bats, and people and squatters. I mean, there are all kinds of activities that happen in these properties. They don't all look like this, but they generally look like a version of this. What I don't have a good picture of here is the fact, we always laugh that any, when they, a property is pitched to us for acquisition, they're generally, you generally can't see the house, it's behind so much greenery, overgrown trees and shrubs, which only contributes to the likelihood that there's criminal activity going on there, because they're easy places to hide. These are some of the properties that we've preserved. So we, even though we have managed $22 million of demolition funding in the last 10 years from the state and federal government, we've been careful not to demolish properties that can be saved. Even if the saving them is going to cost us a lot of money, we want to save structures, we want to preserve the integrity of neighborhoods, if it's possible. So we really fight to save properties, and these are examples from Mount Auburn to the West End, well, actually, the other three are on the West End, that we've saved, that we've invested money in to stabilize to mothball, if you will, until we get a private sector party to purchase them, purchase it from us. Obviously, the bottom right-hand corner is one of our star properties, the Regal Theater. I know a couple of you have had a tour of it recently. We're very happy to be working with Toylin, Toylin O'Neil and Sean Rugless in the renovation of that. So that will be a really nice ribbon-cutting for us all someday. So I, I'm going to do a deep dive into Evanston. You first talk a lot about Evanston. I want to tell you a little bit about how that unfolded, why we went there, and what we've done there. And this was clearly in response to the mortgage crisis. This is the first neighborhood where we started working, and it was in response to a request from the community, from Anzora Atkins, if you know her. She's a very persistent woman, and does not take no for an answer. She had been working with Liz Bloom at the Community Building Institute at Xavier University for some time. They had a housing strategy in place. They'd been working with Model Group, who had done some investment there already, so there was already some private development. And she asked us to come in to help in a number of different ways that I'll, I'll describe. And I think the story is so well-told, that there had not been a private home sale there in nine years. Not one. And nobody there could sell their house then, because there were no comps. Nobody could realize the equity that they had in their homes. And the only transactions that had happened were sales for maybe $25,000 to somebody, where a house went to an investor, who then turned it into a multifamily apartment and charged an awful lot in rent. I mean, that's one of the things we've seen, is that the rents in these, in these neighborhoods were excessively high, despite the condition of the properties and the overall market. So we started working on crime hotspots from the very beginning. For those of you that remember, the top picture is the St. Ledger Apartment Building at the corner, at, at Five Points there, right across from the rec center, and where the Community Council has their office. This was one of the top, maybe, it could have been the top crime spot in the city of Cincinnati, probably tied with the Alms Hotel there, Alms Apartment Building. And you can see after its demolition, there was a 35% reduction in crime. We used $500,000 of our Moving Ohio Forward demolition grant funding to really get that off the ground. Model Group had been working on it for a number of years, and really, there was a gap there that we were able to use our state money for, so we paid for the demolition. And you can see in the bottom picture there, St. Ambrose, which is, has half the density, which is really an important characteristic here. This is St. Ledger. This is the last street that we worked on from a residential perspective. We could have left after probably 22 homes, left Evanston, but we knew it wouldn't be fair to that community if we didn't finish St. Ledger. It's a dead-end street, it was a high-crime street. You can see at the top, all the overgrown trees there. We actually had problems, our contractors had problems with theft there, even though we'd already been working in that neighborhood for five years. We hired somebody from the neighborhood to help us with security, and did new builds there on lots where we had previously demolished homes. The Jack's Carryout in the top there, that actually was funded by the city of Cincinnati, not the landbank, but that acquisition, demolition also was encouraged by the community and the police department because of the criminal activity that happened there. So along the way, we had Anzora Atkins either begging us to do something, or giving us permission to do it along the way. So in the, in the housing market there, like I said, no, no home sales in nine years. Our theory at the beginning was that if we redeveloped 30 homes, that the private market would follow. And this house on the left-hand side was condemned when we acquired it, and it cost, actually, I don't know that that's the first house we did, but the first one that we did cost $157,000 for the renovation. One of the things I'm very proud of is that we're putting houses back together, back to last another 100 years. These were typically 100-year-old homes, and we took them completely apart and put them back together. So this is no lipstick on the pig. This is selling a house to somebody that is in great shape and is going to last another 100 years. That house sold for just under $80,000. It was difficult for that person to get a mortgage, because there hadn't been a comp. That person took a risk. That person did very well. We do have restrictions on these homes, that they have to live there for five years. Once again, not encouraging people to just flip them and make money, but there were, the early home buyers, you know, benefited. They invested early with us, and then saw market appreciation. We completed our 30th home in 2020. So altogether, for those 30 homes, we invested $7.6 million, and sold the homes collectively for six and a half million, or a net of 18% subsidy. So you can see in the first house, where we had 100% subsidy, or, or I guess that's 50%, you know, 50% subsidy, by the time we sold our 28th, 29th, 30th home, we were basically breaking even. So collectively then, we had an 18% subsidy. Mark Wilson in the top was one of the home buyers that bought, he's the one that bought the house, I think, that was in my first picture, that was condemned. Lived there for five years, sold it last year at a handsome profit, and he had not been a homeowner before his purchase in Evanston, so we're very pleased for that. We now can see, as we finished our 30th home sale, the private market is indeed back. The lots that, where we had demolished homes that could not be saved are being sold. Longtime homeowners have their market, their houses up for sale, or are doing renovations themselves. There is a very, very active market there. Along the way, we did a number of different other things. We acquired properties that we sold to Walnut Hills High School for ball fields. We made improvements on the Blair Market there, one of the important neighborhood institutions for decades. We purchased a church, allowing this church, by the way, to relocate. They had, were facing, I think, a half-million-dollar retainage wall problem, and they had structural problems. They approached us about the potential acquisition of that property. And the Merrimack Square is a condominium, I guess it would be townhome, project down the street on Woodburn. We helped facilitate one acquisition, so they would have a nice block for that development. We also then, as we've started to progress with our market rate homes, using HERC, if you're familiar with our conversations about the Homesteading Urban Redevelopment Corporation, the 501(c)(3) that we manage, that's focused on affordable housing. We received money, we sought out the competitive money from the city NOFA program, and have done six affordable homes in Evanston, where typically we're selling them for $150,000, income-restricted, investment in them is approximately $200,000, so we've gotten that $300,000 NOFA grant from the city. We just closed, Deborah just closed two weeks ago, on the sale of a property on Hewitt to the family, to a member of the family that grew up in that house. So that is obviously a home run, when you can bring people back into the community where their family lived for so many years. So over the years, things have changed. Markets across the county, and certainly in the city, have changed since we started this work. We've attracted more capital for investment, both grants and loans. I'll talk about those- I'll talk about those in a minute. And our results in Evanston have led many other communities to seek out our help. We have done, well, as we started in Evanston, I think Walnut Hills was the first community that reached out to us. We were planning to do a $700,000 investment in the business district there, and they asked us instead to do housing. So we have now completed and sold 13 homes in Walnut Hills. We then went to Price Hill, where we have completed 15 homes, sold 14 of them. One of them's on the market right now. Additionally, in Price Hill, through HERC, we've done other affordable homes. The ones I'm talking to about now are the ones that we've done through the land bank, through the REACH program. And then in Avondale, when we are done, we will have 20 homes, 20 homes completed. Two of them are rehabs. And if you recall, these are properties that Children's Hospital gave us, some properties, and a million and a half dollars. So when we're done, we'll have 18 new homes and two renovations there in Avondale. They will finish, the 11 homes that are up on the hillside will start, I think, by March, and the others will be finished by the end of this year. The, one of the things that's happened is that the properties, you, for a long time, we were accumulating properties and there was little demand for them. And now we're seeing a great deal more demand across the board, no matter what community you're in, we're getting more applications from people that want to buy properties from us. And that's a good sign. It's a good sign that markets are coming back. So we're much more engaged now in reviewing applications and meeting with people and helping to, you know, them find their path to an acquisition from us. As a result, I think of what I mentioned earlier, we're now a critical partner for many different communities and municipalities. We hold, I think, a third of the properties that we own, we, or maybe it's more than that, maybe it's 40% of the properties we hold, are in holding agreements, either with jurisdictions, CDCs, or nonprofits. And we continually, continually are sought out to help with either communities, neighborhoods, jurisdictions, nonprofits, or individuals who are seeking to expand their development So this is some of the funding that we've received inside of the land bank, grants from Children's Hospital and the Farmer Family and the City of Cincinnati, and loans from Greater Cincinnati Foundation and IFF and Cincinnati Development Fund. We always have to look for financing to pay the contractors as we do the work, as well as the subsidy for selling the properties for less than our costs. I think you know we're very, very committed to using minority contractors. We are very good customers. We have predictable workflow. We pay very quickly and are, we become very reliable for a number of different contractors. So when we go to the second half of the equation, what I talked about earlier, the disposition of properties. So the two that are highlighted here are two of our programs, the Gardens and Greens and Lot to Yard. And those are, we're selling to people in the community. Lot to Yard, you're buying a vacant lot next door to your current house, or Gardens and Greens, within your neighborhood, you want to have a community garden, for example. Many landbanks in the state really focus on just those two kinds of disposition. We are very much focused, if there can be a house built, we want a house built. We don't like to sell a lot for parking, for example. We don't want to just have somebody put a driveway there. We really want that economic investment and increase in residents, to the extent possible. But those, these sales, the Gardens and Greens and the Lot to Yard, do result in reducing crime and increasing surrounding property values. These other dispositions, though, are the ones that revitalize markets, revitalize business districts and housing markets. And they are to a number of different parties. In the purple and the orange are local governments, the jurisdictions, and community partners, including CDCs. Single-family home development is typically to either a person building their own home or to some, a builder who's going to build homes for sale. And the commercial, the kind of reddish up there at the top, commercial properties are either small apartment buildings or very often, you know, in our business districts, we have buildings that have retail on the first floor apartments on top. Or it could be land, like we have in Bond Hill now, that's actually owned by the Port, not the land bank, but where we have vacant land because commercial properties have been demolished, and our goal is to get commercial activity back there again. One of the things that motivates us is to combat the institutional investment. We made a presentation to you at the last board meeting about the fact that there have been 2,900 homes purchased by institutional investors throughout the county in the last few years. That is a staggering and troubling statistic because very often, what is happening here is that an affordable home ownership is turning into a less affordable rental property. So we have communities then that don't have local ownership of, of the homes in their neighborhoods, they're probably not being taken care of as well, and you have residents that don't have a landlord in town to be responsive to their needs, and they're often paying more for that property. So this is something that motivates us. After we talked to you at the last board meeting, I was asked to speak to the joint meeting of the Township Association and Municipal League, and I can tell you, there's a lot of conversation going on throughout the county because in some communities, this is just becoming a really big challenge. And I think there'll be more activity that we can have with members of the administration about things that we can all do to, to try to tamp this down. So what we're doing now is meeting communities where they are. We are not a, once, you know, we don't have a hammer and everything that comes, wait, to us as a nail? No, that's not the right analogy. And we're trying to customize our needs for individual communities as they reach out to us and, as well as nonprofits. In the Beekman Street corridor, working with WIN, they were, the longtime residents there asked us to put in place a dollar lot program, and this is really taking the side lot program I talked about earlier down to literally a dollar instead of $500 to buy an adjacent property. There is so much vacant land there that what the community wanted was to be able to preserve value by taking care of more of their neighborhood themselves. So we've had, I think, 29 of those sales within the Beekman corridor. Working in neighborhoods specifically for their own home construction, we've acquired 33 properties for them, demolished eight, sold them 17, and this is an example where we have 14 parcels in a holding agreement for them as they raise the funds and are ready to do the construction. And if you're not familiar, they're, they're focused on this net zero, really focused on the energy efficiency of the homes that they sell to keep costs down for the residents. Very recently, you saw in the paper that the City of Glendale, actually, I think that, I think it was the Cincinnati Preservation Association that reached out to us to ask us if we would take, within the land bank, the ownership of the Glendale, of the Exteem School in Glendale, to prevent it from being raised. It's an important African-American building, representing a school for African-American students. And so there, there, the community is fundraising now for a renovation project for that. Having us hold the property will reduce their costs in the short term. In Lincoln Heights, our work there is being funded by the county through the NOFA program, and we currently have four homes under construction that will be sold at the 80% AMI level, and they will be income restricted for 15 years. We're very excited about that. We've got a number of different conversations going on in Lincoln Heights, but this is where we've actually broken ground. Habitat for Humanity in Greater Cincinnati relies on us 100% for their inventory, whether it's of a house in need of renovation or a vacant lot for new construction. We also sold them two of the, of the Bay Miller row houses in the West End. That was at the request of Seven Hills. The local CDC did not want to see all of those be market rate, so we agreed to sell two of those homes to Habitat. We had to get an agreement from the City of Cincinnati in that case because they funded the stabilization of those properties. And then to put a finer point on, on dispositions and the care with which we take those. As I mentioned, we've sold 1,000 parcels, 140 of them this year, so that's a reflection of the increase in demand and our increase in activity to be able to meet that demand. You've met Jillson Daniels, who joined us last November as our Vice President of Economic Equity. He's got, he wears a number of different hats. One of them is to make sure that in our public finance practice, that adequate effort is spent by the developers and contractors on inclusion spending. But he also is spending a great deal of time identifying potential African-American investors in real estate, as well as developers and contractors. So we've got a little ecosystem there, and he's working closely with a number of other organizations, including the Urban League, the Minority Business Accelerator, the African-American Chamber. He's on the board of the Ohio MSBDC, there are too many letters in there. So he's doing a lot more outreach. So we're not just waiting for people to ring our doorbell and say, "We want to buy property from you." We're going out to look for people and cultivate their interest in investing in real estate. You may know that one of our former employees, Darren Hall, bought 25 lots from us in Evanston for new home construction. The house in the middle up there is on Hackberry. It was purchased from the land bank by Robert Sanders, also a former Port employee, who's now a minority developer in town. Robert was also, you saw him at the Triversity groundbreaking. He's the developer that's working in Walnut Hills on the property we sold to him for the development of Triversity's office. Just last Thursday, we sold an apartment building in Evanston to Gloria Walker, if you know her, financed by CDF. We worked with her for a long time to get that pro forma to work for her. And we have several other sales pending in the West End, Avondale, and Evanston. We're using RFPs for our commercial property in certain cases, working very closely with the communities, and as I said, working hard to cultivate more new developers. So going forward, as, as we all know, affordability is becoming an increasingly more important issue. Left, I think, if the market had its own way, that would not be addressed. It's going to take all of us in the public sector to ensure that we have more affordable homes. Our efforts turn increasingly to affordable housing. After we finished the homes I mentioned in Avondale, we have nothing else in our pipeline of market rate homes. We are working on affordability. The fact that the real estate market is booming means that the properties that are available to us are really in the worst of worst shapes. It used to be, you know, if you went back five years, the forfeited land list, which is the list of properties that have been auctioned off twice and nobody bought for the outstanding taxes, they go to the forfeited land list where they're available for a very nominal amount. It used to be, there would be 800 properties on there, and we would take that list, and we couldn't take all the properties, we couldn't afford to maintain them, but we would kind of pitch them to all the neighborhood CDCs, and we'd just share that list and really try to market it, so people that were going to do something, the properties would buy them, rather than out-of-town people buying them like lottery tickets. Well, now that forfeited land list has far fewer properties on, on it because of the increasing demand. And so the ones that we're ending up with look, are in the worst possible shape, because even the speculators don't want them. We're going to continue to cultivate diverse owners, and what we haven't done yet, and probably one of the most unmet needs, is funds for maintenance and repairs for legacy residents. We are, will continue to look to best practices in other communities to determine ways that that can be done. And I know that when we come to the land bank board meeting in a couple of weeks, we're going to talk about some benchmarking with other landbanks in the state. We're looking to see if there are some programs there that we can look to for guidance. And if not, you know, we're going to have to reach farther than Ohio to find some of those, those programs. We have received so far, $2.5 million of ARP funding from the city. The, we're hopeful that we have another $2.5 million next year. What we are going to, our plan is to build on the vacant lots that we have in the land bank. That will have the benefit of filling in the missing teeth in these neighborhoods that have been, you know, decimated through demolition. So we're going to be very pleased to go back in and fill in some of the neighborhoods that have the most amount of, have had the most amount of demolition. And once again, we're looking at best practices to see how we can leverage this funding to the greatest extent for the most number of properties. And I think the one thing I didn't really say that I wanted to say is, maybe it goes all the way back to... Bear with me one second. As we look at these, the, I want to acknowledge the fact that, the fact that there are so many of properties in our county that look like this, and often in historically black neighborhoods, is a result of longstanding systemic racism and, you know, legalized discrimination. And I, I, that, it's incredibly unfortunate, and we have made it our mission to do our very best to return those neighborhoods back to thriving communities where the legacy residents are, are a part of the success. I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your thorough report. Certainly appreciate it. Before we move forward, I just wanted to say, our new treasurer is here, Jill Schiller, and I want not to ignore you. She's part of the land bank also. So thank you, Laura, so much for this. I will open it up for discussion. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President, and want to thank the board. I had asked for this presentation, and thank you, Laura, for your thorough, in-depth presentation. And I wanted something because, for me, transparency is everything. And on the front cover, you showed our photos, the treasurer's new as well, but very important because the treasurer decides, you know, they incorporated for us to have a land bank, and will play a major role. And I wanted to add a lot of questions, not from myself, but from people. When we go into land bank meetings, we're in a room down the hall, and it's not on Zoom, and most of the people that come already kind of know the land bank. The other thing is, we moved from a position of three who have to transfer the money, where we would have the majority, the three of us, to a minority position on the land bank. We go, one of, we're one of nine members. So to get something done is a little different than, you know, we're, we're in charge to move the money over there, but then we go in, we, we come from a position of, being a majority, to a position of one of nine. So I wanted to have the, the conversation before we moved money, because I know there's some additional money available that has come from the taxes of the people. So I want to go back to the basics of people who are watching, the questions that I have been asked by people over the years. Want to make clear that this is nothing, I always say, it's never personal, it's business, as you have to go on very tough business deals and, very tough, I know, that you have to participate in. But I wanted to have enough time to ask their questions, who may not be here today, may not have a chance to watch it live, might have to watch a rerun, but I asked them for their questions and that I would ask them of you. Let's take a step back. The land bank is funded through what? And I know the answer, but I want you, it's funded through...
So it has a stream of funding that is 5% of the delinquent tax collections of the county, and that's by state law when, when landbanks were put, were formed by, under the Higher Vice Code.
Gotcha.
And as I said, we've, we've got other funding sources besides the, besides those tax collections, but that is a steady stream that we can rely on.
Yep. So the land bank, because of state law, only allows us... So the land bank, because of state law, only allows us, so if you're delinquing your taxes, you're paying for them possibly to take your house eventually, if you don't catch up. But the delinquent taxes are, go to a land bank by law, but it doesn't say who has to run the land bank. It's a contract with the land bank to decide who's going to contract. And the Port Authority is a contractor that is paid to run the land bank. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I was, only thing I could find, I went back to 2012, the agreement, I don't know if it's been updated, February of 2012, what we agreed to as a county, this came from, I believe, the County Commission, because we had to give the money. Yes, came from the County Commission, not the land bank, but the County Commission between the county and the Port Authority. And I guess we put the initial money up that was given to us, $700,000 for operations, another $1 million, 45 days from that, and that would go as, signed by the new president of the port, that would be you. And then, as last time, we put some, $2 million toward being able to buy some property in addition to that.
So I know it's confusing. That contractor referring to is a contract between the county and the Port Authority.
Okay.
So the, the Port Authority itself, and everything I talked about today was the land bank, the Port Authority was formed jointly by the city and the county, who agreed at that time in 2001 to fund jointly, both operating as well as capital. Over the years, the Port Authority has had far more money from the city for capital investment. So when we, we're in Bon Hill yesterday, all the land we've purchased in Bon Hill and Jordan Crossing and Seymour Plaza, that was with money from the city. And then the county has made two capital investments for our industrial strategy, two significant ones, and then other funding for due diligence.
Okay. So then, bring me to my next question. The question was asked, what's the difference between the Port Authority and the land bank? Because it's, you know, that's where people are getting confused.
Yep. So the Port Authority, like I said, has formed jointly by the city and the county. There are 10 board members, five appointed by the city, five appointed by the county, and the Port Authority Board then hires me, right, and the staff works for me. Our, so we have one staff, everybody's on the Port Authority payroll, and then the Port Authority manages three other entities. We manage the land bank, we manage the nonprofit I mentioned, the affordable housing nonprofit, and then we manage the foreign trade zones in, in Southern Ohio and Northern Kentucky. So the, the mission is very much consistent. We obviously have four different boards that we report to, and four different budgets, four different audits, you know, so we have to manage these things separately, but there are, you know, certainly overlaps. And as I mentioned earlier, when the land bank was incorporated and we were asked to be the manager of it, the motivation was economies of scale.
So some would say that's a monopoly. How would you, so you have, we pay you to manage the land bank, there's a fee that the land bank pays you for, after we transfer the money to the land bank, then the land bank does a contract with the Port Authority to run it. In addition, we also give money to the Port Authority, whether it's, whether it's the same as the city or not, we gave $2 million for you to purchase some land, and then we also give you a $700,000 or more of just a regular economic development fee. Is that correct?
So, yes, I don't know that I would characterize it as double dipping or something, but what...
I said triple, but that's okay.
I was trying to remember if you said double or triple.
We'll use monopoly today.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the, you know, you think you have to look collectively at what you're asking, what results you're asking for us to deliver and whether or not we're delivering them. If you take a look at the land bank by itself, the numbers I gave you, when I said $900,000 for maintenance and $500,000 for demolition and stabilization, that's about $1,004,000 of the money we get goes right there. No staff, you know, that's just out the door to take care of properties. So it's a, so it's not that the money is, is being spent on us, it's being spent on, invested in real estate. I mean, that's, the goal is that we're investing money in real estate. I will say that when I started at the port, the, the $1,004,000 that the city and the county gave to the port was 71% of our budget, and now it's less than 10%. Because we've diversified our revenue into other things so that we can be, basically have the most impact possible. So our goal is to deliver results. Our goal is to save real estate from falling apart, from being underutilized, from being a crime hotspot, from lowering quality of life, and turn that real estate, we like to say, we want, real estate should work. Real estate, we have a finite amount of real estate, and we want it to either be supporting people in residence or jobs. We want there to be capital investment, we want taxes to be paid. So we're taking, doing everything we can to increase the impact we make. And so part of the money is being spent on salaries, but a big part of the money is being spent actually investing in the real estate itself.
Thank you. I'm not questioning the salaries piece, but we are having an ownership conversation, and we may have a difference of opinion on ownership. You just gave one thing we do agree on. It's a finite, land does not be, does not become reproduced. I was just on a conference that was held, I think you might have been there, it was virtual, with Xavier, and it was on black home ownership. And I think we have an ownership question, not about, you know, are you doing your due diligence and those kind of things, because there's other organizations that also do their due diligence. It's the question of how this land bank operates because of the complaints that I have been receiving. Now, these complaints might not make it in that room, but a lot of these things are realistic. You have a few photos on here. The number one thing people use for gentrification is crime. That's the fastest way to drive down the, the value of the land. Whenever someone wants to take over a neighborhood, the crime goes up. Not, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying that's, it's just, it's in statistics, you Google it, it's there. So the first thing we say, we want to clean up crime. And we go in, and all of a sudden, when we clean it up, certain people are leaving that weren't part of the crime, and they tend to, 99% of the time, look like me. So the question that I wanted to have on the land bank, I've been pushing this, that we're in a new day, we got new science, we got new technology, and we sometimes need to do some new things. Now, everything you presented in here sounds beautiful, and if everything was beautiful, then we wouldn't have an affordable housing problem. Based on what you presented, affordable housing should not be a problem. The questions that I have had, I'll give you, one, I'll give you one, you gave a lot of examples of Cincinnati, City of Cincinnati. And what I've always said is that it seems to be, when it came to the City of Cincinnati, certain neighborhoods, and me being a vice mayor of the city, I knew you just can't walk in certain neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods you could, but some you can't. And what I've found is that you had a lot of projects in the city, but when you go out to these townships, you're invited in to very difficult, what you were, the reason the port was existed, to do these difficult projects. But in certain, certain neighborhoods, particularly African-Americans, it seems like, I don't want to pay for you to drive around and just say, "We're going to come and take this property." That's not the intent. So I think a lot of these things we put together start off for the right cause, but if you don't do them correctly, sometimes they could get out of control. So I wanted to find out, what is the relationship between the Port Authority and the building inspectors?
Okay. So you, you raised a number of issues there. Let me go back to your opening line about real estate's finite and, and who owns it. Our goal, this is a really important fact, is our goal is to be an intermediary. Our goal is not to own real estate. Our goal is to assemble real estate, do something to it, and sell it. It's not to own it. And that's why, you know, I emphasize very proudly that we've sold 1,000 parcels. Our goal is to have our inventory go down. So that's, that's number one. You know, so you have to believe that we're trying to sell the property. Then your question is, all right, to whom are you trying to sell it? Maybe it's, from whom did you get it, and to whom are you selling it? From whom we got it are those properties that I showed you. They are not, there aren't homeowners. We are not, trust me, we're not driving around looking for homes to buy. We're not buying people's homes. We're buying what were homes that are now houses that are in terrible shape, that have been abandoned for a number of different reasons.
What about commercial property?
So the commercial property, or the ones, the most recent one we talked about, clearly was abandoned, and foreclosed, and, you know, vacant and crime-ridden. There are times where we purchased a commercial property, like the Gibson Green Card site, we did buy that, it was, there was a business, it was for sale, you know, it was marketed for sale. That property previously had $1 million of tax revenue a year for Amberly Village, when Gibson Green Cards was there. And when we bought it, there were 20 employees, they were, it was a company importing shower curtains from China, selling them to Dollar General stores, paying $1.17 a square foot in rent. So that fits my definition of broken real estate. It's not, wasn't working for Amberly Village. It wasn't working for the neighbors of that property. And it wasn't providing customers for all those Bon Hill, Roson businesses that thrived when there were 800 employees at Gibson Greens. So that was an occupied property, but it was listed for sale. We're not, you know, we're either buying something that's marketed for sale, or it's You raised another question, though...
Yep. Your relationship with the building inspectors.
Oh, okay. So the, and actually, we have a good relationship with the building inspector, but it's probably not what you expect. What, our relation with the building inspector is, take the Regal Theater, for example, which was abandoned and falling apart, and full of code violations. So the building department comes to us and says, "We will pay you a certain amount of money to go, we'll give you an agency agreement," because we can't go, you can't go show up on real estate that you don't own, "but if it's abandoned and it's got these code violations, the city can say, we're going to give you an agency agreement to go on that property, we'll pay you to fix the problems." And then we have the power to put a lien on it for the money we spent fixing the problems. And then it goes through a foreclosure process, and if the owner, wherever that owner might have been, wanted it, all it had to do is pay off the liens, and they could have gotten it back. But after time passes, then we foreclose on it and we own it. And that is true for the Christian Moreline House, it's true for those Bay Miller townhouses. So the, the buildings department is trying to save properties, and they're looking for opportunities to work with us to stabilize, fix the code violations, and put a lien on it to get it in public control. Now, what you're probably referring to are the NEP kind of, when, when the buildings department goes in and does their, a neighborhood improvement enhancement program, and, but, like in Avondale, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, but we're, we're not a part of that at all. That's the, the city doing that, and they're generally doing that in partnership with the neighborhood. I think the neighborhoods have to invite them in to do that. So we are not, there, there aren't homeowners in the properties we buy. There's no person living there.
But you, could you, you didn't go on, what's the difference between what property goes for the Port Authority and what property you decide you're going to put in the land bank? You, you indicated earlier that unlike other landbanks, we have commercial property in landbanks. So we're not just talking about houses. So that's a big deal with commercial property.
So the commercial...
Which one, how do you decide what goes where?
That's a good question. Well, so the hotels, when we buy them, when we close on that sale of that, those hotels, we will take the ownership through the land bank to extinguish the delinquent taxes of $150,000. And to a finer point on a previous discussion, we lowered the price we paid. They agreed to take $1,005,000, but then they would have had to pay the $150,000 in tax. We said, "We'll pay you $1,003,500." So it saved us money, and they got the same amount. So it's a technical, put it through the land bank for that reason. But ultimately, where the property sits depends on where the money comes from. So the $2 million, our industrial strategy sits inside of the Port Authority. We've got other money inside the Port Authority to spend on the property from other sources. So I know that's confusing, and...
No, I'm not confused. I'm with you. I want to make sure the people watching are with you. So my point is, that's why I said about the triple dipping or the monopoly. If you have this entity, right, and unlike, I mean, Port Authority's great, but 3CDC, Uptown Consortium, there's a whole lot of entities like you. The only difference, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, the only difference is that you are paid by us to run a land bank. So like you said, you could take a hotel, too, you had another one down there, but you could take hotels or whatever, commercial properties, move them into a land bank. No other land bank in the state does commercial properties. I guess, and that was news to me when I, when that deal came through. And you're saying you took it through the land bank because we paid for the $2 million and you used that money, or are you taking any other commercial properties to the land bank? When it goes to the land bank, you don't have to pay taxes. I mean, that's, that's a great thing. You could just sit on this thing, and you'd never have to pay.
But that's why the landbanks were formed.
For commercial properties?
They were formed, and I, and I'm, I don't know that it's a true statement that no other land bank takes commercial property.
Oh, I was going with what you said.
Yeah, I know, I said, "I don't know." You know, I, I'm not going to say that that's a definitive statement. No other, that's been a benefit of the partnership with the port who has this industrial strategy. So the properties we're taking were, were, the reason that the land bank doesn't pay property taxes is that those property taxes stand in the way of redevelopment.
Right. No, I understand that, and that's why we have certain, if I'm a developer, you have a couple of developers, you see them all over the town, it's the same people, they wait for the Port Authority to get it, because you don't have to pay taxes on it, then you could come in and buy it. That's the only reason that hotel was sitting there for so long, is because of the, it had a, if you bought it, you have to assume, a private person buying something, I'm just using that as an example, I don't, but if, if a private person buys a property, a tax-paying private business, who pays us taxes, who the treasurer's going to send them a bill, if they want to buy a property, they must assume the tax that comes with that property. If the Port Authority buys it, we're going to help pay for it, we're going to help you to run an organization, and you're going to, and they don't have to pay taxes, right?
But the goal is, this, so first of all, when the delinquent taxes on properties, whether it's a house or a hotel, often stand in the way of it getting redeveloped. So the land bank is an agent to facilitate getting it back, redeveloped, getting it back on the tax rolls. You know, we haven't talked about, and maybe I'll, I'll bring this to our next land bank board meeting, the millions of dollars of taxes that are now being paid on those thousand properties that we have sold. So we're trying to do a do-over, and I agree, writing off taxes isn't good, but if nobody was going to pay them and is going to continue to sit there and deteriorate because of the increasing taxes, then that's not good. What's good is getting properties back in productive use. And I don't see how we're double dipping. We're not making profit on it. We're, and, and if we did make profit on it, it's going to get reinvested back in the next project. We're just looking at the troubled properties in our county and trying to get them fixed. And ultimately, as I said, we're an intermediary, we're not going to hold real estate in the long term. A private party is going to buy it from us at, you know, at some point.
Yeah. Madam President, I just wanted to, and I thank you for that. I think we have a difference of opinion. I'm looking for something different, because I look at what has transpired, I look at the gentrification that's transpired, I look at the fact that there's a federal lawsuit now dealing with tax abatements in certain communities. I'm not saying this is all you. I'm looking at the fact that when we go into a community like a Bon Hill, it used to, he's, he's dead now, but when he was alive, Charlie's Carpet owned the building. We now just renting. We gone from ownership to rentership. I'm also looking at the fact that we should look at land trusts, Columbus is looking at that. Columbus has two landbanks, I believe, a city land bank and a county... Columbus has two land banks, I believe, a city land bank and a countywide land bank. Um, and I wanna look at some new ways, because even though in here we get, this is a great presentation, but when I leave out here, I get everybody and their, and their brothers stopping me. I get Christina Cookies originally. They said it was a great deal, but then she felt almost bullied into a ten-year lease. Nobody does a ten-year lease on Cookies in, um, in Bond Hill. Uh, the woman with the soul food spot that moved from down in the West End, uh, where we, where she could get actually more business, now she's on California Avenue and she has a food truck with her name all over it. And it said the Port Authority, and I thought it was her food truck. She's, oh, I'm, they, they tell me I gotta pay them some money for a food truck that got her name on it. Or Jean Ellington that just, uh, went online and said, "Ask them, are they doing any, uh, any type of partnerships with African-American developers?" Or Iris Rowley, who, uh, just sent the question of, "When we get these properties, do the people that live in the community get to live back in those, uh, in those communities?" Uh, Bible Way was used, but I remember being at my church, and people said, "Get over there, they don't put Bible Way out on the, on the street corner." I don't know if that's true or not, but... And then, the last thing, uh, I will say this in a memory of Robert Lane, who was over the realist, who, um, who I know this happened firsthand. Uh, he passed away, he owned a lot of properties, in Evanston and some other areas. Not looking like those that we put up, we put the worst up. And his daughter was mourning her death of, of her father, and forty-eight hours later, they got a nasty letter from the Port Authority. And then, when she didn't respond, here come the building inspectors. And I remember Todd Bertune, who's no longer here with us, uh, he had worked a lot with Todd Bertune. She came down, her mother with an oxygen tank to this building, to Todd Bertune, to say, "Can you, Jeff, and talk to the Port Authority? Because they out here bullying people." So, I don't want that, and I know that happened, because I saw it myself. It's not, "Oh, what do you mean?" I seen it, I lived it. And what I'm saying is, when you talk about the barriers to African-Americans having any type of existence that we're even here, you're right, redlining, no access to capital, zoning, building inspectors. But I know that also, this land bank, it could be a good tool, but if it's used incorrectly, it, it might not be a good tool. So, I just want to work on these issues. The Regal, you brought up the Regal. I used to go to the Regal. My grandmother lived in the West End. I know about the West End. But when I went down there with, you know, Toy Lin, you would tell me that, "Oh, you're ready to do..." But she told me she's under tremendous pressure and a timeline. If she don't raise X amount of dollars, the Port Authority told her, she's out.
She, that's, she has no...
I don't know if it's, I mean, this is what these people are telling me. So, I wanted to get to the bottom of it, black owned. They said they got a building in the West End, they trying to get, they can get a deal with the Bengals, uh, to sell their apparel, but they said they, they couldn't even get a phone call back. Somebody had to get them to get a, a, a phone call back. So, those are the type of things I don't want to hear. Um, and that's why I asked about the land bank, because I didn't really understand that we could put commercial property in a land bank. I thought it was just housing. So, when they told me about commercial, I was like, "Oh, no, it's not commercial." And then I found out it was. So, I wanted everyone to be able to find out what this is, and then to see is this the right direction that we should be going?
So, if I can respond to some of your comments. First of all, if, when somebody calls you with a complaint, please tell them to call me. I, I talk to people all the time. And that's, that's number one. I think, I pride ourselves in being responsive, um, to complaints. I'm not gonna say we're perfect, but man, we're trying. Um, number two, um, we are working with a number of black developers and black investors, and it, and that number is growing. Um, and I'd, you know, I'd be happy to provide a list to you, or maybe you would, you could meet with Jolson Daniels and learn more about what he's doing to promote and identify new ones. Um, that's, you know, I, I, I think that for our, that's what I want my legacy to be. I want my legacy to be that I have moved the needle on black ownership of real estate. So, um, that, those are the intentions, um, whether you believe them or not. Um, the one aspect you mentioned about community land trusts, you know, we're looking at those too. And, and that's an interesting topic, because what that means is they're, they're permanently affordable. And so, if we're trying to get a black family into a home for wealth creation, if it's held by community land trust, that prevents it. It caps and says, "You can't sell it, you know, you can't ride the appreciation that that home will have." It caps it as permanently affordable. So, it's not perfect. Now, are there ways to use that? I think there are, and we're going to continue to explore that. Um, but what we want is for people to have a chance to have, you know, appreciation in their home. But then, that's, you know, that means that we have to, and going back to your earlier comment about affordability, we, we haven't, um, we have done nothing to accelerate an affordability problem. Every home that we have either renovated or built was on either a vacant lot or vacant house. So, we've just moved more people in. Um, what, if you read, I think, one of the best articles or papers I've read about this in our region is the Chambers, um, paper on affordable housing that talks about the fact, what we need is just more of everything. We need more construction at all levels of housing, because it is all constrained, it's pushed down. And so, if people can't move up, then the peop-, nobody can, you know, take their place in the more affordable homes. Uh, so, we need more construction of all types, both rental and homeownership. And, and, um, I forgot how to say it. And, and I guess, I, you know, I apologize to, for times when we've done something insensitive or maybe outright wrong. And I, it's my mission that we are continuously getting better and that we meet the needs of our county, because we've got an incredible staff with an incredible amount of passion, a lot of expertise, and, um, a lot of tools. So, we're, we are here to serve. And ultimately, your goals are not different than my goals.
I appreciate that. The reason I had to ask the hard questions is because we can't move and correct things if we don't, uh, put them out on the table. And, um, uh, as we're moving forward, I'm saying we got to do some things a little bit different and some different folks at the table. You're absolutely right. I'm not just on affordable by the, uh, definition of federal government, because you almost gotta be destitute to be affordable. I'm talking about the middle class, and I'm talking about working, people who work every day, many of whom struggle to pay the bills and pay the taxes, but at the same time deserve to be able to afford to live in Hamilton County. I don't want to be, I mean, I want to stay in Cincinnati. It's, it's difficult, uh, to live here. Evanston, I, you, you mentioned Evanston, but it helped bring, you know, some homes, but it's seven hundred thousand dollars, some of these places I've seen, that I can't believe.
The maximum we sold was three...
I know, not you, but I'm saying by us investing in it, it brings the marketplace up.
But then, the, there is, the nice thing about Evanston is that there's, it's big, there's a wide range of housing. Like I said, we're selling houses for a hundred and fifty thousand. There are twelve hundred square foot homes in Evanston and four thousand square foot homes. So, there's a wide range. Um, and I do think that, um, I do think there's something for everyone someplace in Evanston, but maybe it's hard to find.
It's hard to find. Madam President, I just would ask that, on the Regal Theater, um, if there is some confusion there, I would love for you to maybe come back with Toy Lin or whoever's involved to give us what's happening with that. Because I do want the right information out. Also, with the project that, uh, Black Owned, I know they're doing some things with the Bengals.
They've just had a tour, they're, he's considering more than one property. He's looked at three different ones. I heard just this morning that he, um, thinks he's found the right one. It's not one that we own, it's one, um, it's privately owned. Uh, but he's looked at properties of ours, he thought one was too big, you know. So, we've been very actively engaged with them. We want nothing more than, for them, him to be successful. And yes, I'm sure Toy Lin and Sean, um, just last week, Sean asked if Jolson Daniels and my staff could help with the financial, financial pro forma for that property. There's no time pressure on, on her. It's her own. I mean, she's trying to raise, she, get a state capital grant. We were successful in getting one in the last round that somehow mysteriously disappeared. Um, so, she's working on the state capital grant. I know when you were there, you had three, at least three of the, um, local state reps on that tour with you. And, um, she's fundraising, I know she's got the tem-, you know...
That's Rosemary, Rosemary. That's another proj-, that's another project, she was in the back. Rosemary, uh, was, is dealing with you on a project.
Um, Toy Lin, though, had a fundraiser on the park across the street, I think, a few weeks ago.
Yep, that was her. So, thank you, Madam President. That's the, uh, what I'd like, I wanted to bring forward. And, uh, as we're moving forward, looking at new ways and other ways, uh, if there are some other ways, uh, to make sure that we have ownership, diverse ownership. We do a lot, a lot of, um, we're helping a lot of small businesses, as well as others, with, um, grants. And a lot of those grants are going to the landlord owners, and most of them are not, um, African-American or minority ownership. So, we want to increase the ownership. I don't know if we have anything downtown that is even, uh, owned, uh, minority owned, but we want to increase ownership, like you said, because that's something that's not, you can't manufacture, remanufacture it, rather. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for the presentation related to land banks. Um, I remember being in the legislature when we created land banks, um, and how it was such a new concept in Hamilton County. And there was a little bit of consternation about, um, a land bank, um, being situated here. And, you know, now all, many, many counties have land banks. Um, it was mostly about the funding of the land bank, from my recollection, and how much of the DTAC money would be used for this purpose. But, you know, at that time, we were in the middle of a foreclosure crisis, and people were losing their homes like crazy, and neighborhoods were sitting in the middle of vacant properties that then became blighted properties. I was in one of those neighborhoods at the time, and we did a study about what it meant to have a blighted vacant property in your neighborhood and the impact by way of the kind of geography as it spread out. And it was significant. And everybody's property values were going down. I owned a business all, also in the same neighborhood, and, um, property values were declining everywhere. And it was simply because we had so much vacant property and there was no hope in sight. And so, the land banks were created so that we could get a handle on that and figure out a way to get those, as you say, into what I call productive use, whether it's on the commercial side or the residential side. Um, get these properties, not only for the tax rolls, which was important, but also for the neighborhoods and for the families that were, you know, um, cast out of their homes, uh, through the foreclosure price, crisis oftentimes, not because of anything that they had done wrong, but they were deceived and, and they were on the streets. So, um, the land bank came in, uh, the DTAC money was set aside, and we have been, you know, working with the land bank ever since to try to, um, understand how we can, as, as the public side, reinvest in these neighborhoods to the benefit of all, including those that are moving into these properties, a- as you turn them around. And, you know, so my experience is that, um, when I, I used to go door-to-door all the time when I was campaigning, and, um, people would say to me, "Hey, can you get the land ba-, what, I need to contact the land bank. I've got a blighted property, um, they're the ones that come in, and, you know, no, obviously, nobody's living there. And can they come in and take hold of this property so that we can figure out a way to put it into some beneficial use?" And, and whether it was on, you know, like, I remember Chiviett, the mayor, Chiviett, saying this to me. Um, and I said, "Sam, you know, you gotta call the land bank." But, um, so it was on the residential, you know, neighbors and also, um, you know, these jurisdiction leaders saying, you know, "We need some help." Uh, and the land bank came in and did that. So, I've, I have a couple of questions for you. The DTAC money is what funds the land bank. Um, I don't know how much is now, at this moment in time. I, I know it fluctuates, but how much or so is going from DTAC into the land bank for this work?
I think this year, because of the increase, it'll be two point six. Um, it's been, I would say, most years at about two million, maybe two, two point one million.
Okay. So, you are using those funds, you're leveraging funds, uh, to bring in. And, and I, I do, I, I also get a little confused. It's a land bank and, and there's the Port Authority and there's a nexus, but a lot of the investing that the county has done related to, um, properties is on the commercial side, and it's through the port.
Yes, yes.
Because what we were hearing was that, um, we didn't have sites available for folks that want to come in and, you know, do light manufacturing and create some jobs in this community. And so, um, we decided to invest in, uh, that site readiness piece and also some of the work that you're doing elsewhere, um, just as the port, and in, and in turn, support the land bank. I mean, I think we, I, there is an obvious overlap in the work that you're doing. So, it's, gosh, two million, that doesn't seem like very much.
Well, and, well, it's interesting, and it's kind of like, um, what you, what you asked for, be careful what you ask for. I felt back in two thousand twelve, it was an enormous victory to convince a Republican, uh, commission to, or, well, the Republican commissioners, even though there are only, um, um, two of the nine board members of the land bank, but the treasurer and the others on the board, to invest in Evanston. I mean, that was the first major thing we did with the land bank, was to invest in Evanston. And we did that because it was, um, the number one community throughout, in the county for the, um, for vacancy and foreclosure. So, we invested all this, um, county money, but then, as you saw, you know, a lot of, we got back. You know, we, we left one point three million in those homes, but we got six and a half million dollars back to recycle. And that's really what we've been doing, is recycling the money. Um, and then, like I said, what we've done in Avondale and Price Hill has been funded privately without the DTAC. And then, what we've done is spread out and really, over time, started doing less home redevelopment and taken on a larger inventory, which means we need more money for the maintenance and the demolition and the stabilization.
Right, yeah, and it's, it's a partnership with the communities that's so important too, right? Because you need the local partners. Um, I have one other question. So, we have talked, I, I know we've talked at the land bank board, um, a number of times, about this idea that when you go into a community like Evanston and, um, you improve the housing, you bring people into the community, property values start to rise. We've got legacy residents that, um, have, as the property values go up, they have to pay more in property taxes. And sometimes that is a burden for folks, not only in Evanston, but in other communities. And how do we, and I know we've talked about this before, how do we think through making sure that they are not at risk of, you know, losing their homes now, uh, because they simply can't afford to pay for that increased value in their own property?
So, we will, we will share you, share with you the next board meeting analysis we did in Evanston, which I, I don't know the exact figures, but the biggest, um, there are two things we learned. One is increase in taxes was largely due to levies, the, um, preschool promise that happened in the intervening time, um, that, and that the increase in values of the surrounding homes were not impacted by the homes that we did. You know, the, so, but we did a very thorough analysis of that, and we'll share that with you at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
You know, we've been talking about that ever since, you know, for eight years, we've been looking at how can, what can be done. Obviously, one thing's a homestead exemption, um, that we need to make sure everyone's taking advantage of that, that is eligible.
Well, and you even mentioned the legacy residence fund, so, yeah, I feel like...
I think that's, I think that, to me, that's the next big thing, is having, um, funding for the repairs for the surrounding property owners so that they can realize the appreciation that's being, you know, is brought by the other surrounding property, um, improvements.
Right, yeah. I, I would love to see that, because, you know, the preschool promise was a huge hit on everybody's tax bills. And I think sometimes we forget some of that context of what else goes into increased taxes. Never mind there are reappraisals, uh, that are done periodically by the auditor. Um, so, there are different factors. However, if there is this piece where, um, we need to pay some attention to that as we move in, you know, and, and doing good and positive work in a community, but there's this negative downside, you know, I, I just want to better understand that. And, and I don't, Evanston is an example, maybe there are others. Um, but I just want to be cognizant of it, because I, we can't leave that to the side. You know, we can't ignore that impact.
I agree. And, but one of the things that's important to always think about is, what if we didn't? What if we had just never done anything in Evanston at all? You know, where would Evanston be now? And would it, you know, and how could it possibly be better than it is? Because people couldn't buy the homes, you know, they're, they're, in addition to the taxes, the other valuable part of the land bank is liens and, um, probate issues. When, when houses are abandoned and they're in lots of different people's names and there are old liens on them, so they're just not even, nobody's even capable of buying it. there are old liens on them, so they're just not even, nobody's even capable buying it, even if they could get a loan, which you can't get if there aren't any comps. So, there's, you know, this isn't perfect. You know, what we've done has certainly not been perfect, but I can't imagine not having a decade behind us of this investment in these neighborhoods.
Well, no, as I said, and I'll just finish with this, that, you know, this was all prompted by the foreclosure crisis. And we were all, I think every neighbor, every single neighborhood suffered during the foreclosure crisis. I don't care what the property value was, um, rich homes, poorer homes, middle-class, everybody suffered, because people were getting kicked out of their homes by banks that were unwilling to work deals to keep them in their homes. And, uh, and then they sat vacant, and they were, you know, they were sold off a million different times, and nobody even knew who owned the homes.
Right, right.
Because the, the original banker was long gone in that transaction. So, it was a real crisis. Um, and we at the legislature, and Commissioner Reese was there at the time, we tried to do a multitude of pieces of legislation, trying to get to this idea of how do we stem this crisis, and the land bank grew out of that. And so, I don't disagree with you. If, if we had not had this tool and this kind of investment, um, I don't know where we'd be in, in every neighborhood. But here we are, uh, trying to, you know, improve on something that, um, has worked and, and make sure that we're kind of hitting it all correctly. So, I appreciate you coming in, I'll, I'll look forward. I don't remember when our next land bank meeting is, but-
Two weeks from today.
It's coming up. Yeah, yeah, so, uh, but thank, thank you for the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. We mentioned about, um, helping homeowners with repair, and I know the board brought up about two or three weeks ago, maybe a little longer, that we wanted to look into a possible program as we look at our budget and, um, providing, uh, new things, uh, new interventions to help our, uh, people out in the community. So, I would hope that we continue to look at that as we talk about our budget.
Madam President, before you stop on that point-
Sure.
I think we put some money.
Mm-hmm.
We got some money over there. I mean, you brought up a good point. We do have something now to help people, don't we, uh? I don't, I don't know, maybe if they do, just in case somebody's watching. You brought up a good point. We, as a board, we said this was important. We put some money up, we're gonna, uh, look at a budget further, but we got some money right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. How much do we have?
Madam President?
Thank you.
Great question, thank you. It was one of my notes to say, is, um, you may recall in our American Rescue Plan, we did put aside a lot of money for housing, including production of new affordable housing, as well as preservation. And we have, um, groups meeting as we speak, um, over the next few months to help us decide the best way to use that money. But it is, um, I believe it was 10 million for preservation, but it's just how do we want to use those dollars, which is what our, our groups are looking at right now. And we'll come back with recommendations to the board on, on the uses of those fundings.
Okay.
I'm gonna interject that, I think it was five. I don't mean to be incorrigible, but I think it was five, um, because I think five was mortgage assistance, five was, um, keeping folks in their homes, and five was building more. But, but that's finite. Uh, you know, it's, it's great, and I, and I think it's a great, it's a high priority of all of us. However, the, this, this work continues, and that money has to be spent in like four years. So, it's a good start, but then we're gonna have to look to how we continue to fund that, maybe through a different mechanism after that funding runs out.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I, I didn't want people to, we didn't, we're not waiting. We got some money running, and, uh, we used to give some money to PWC and some other folks too, to help you with repairs around your house. So, I just wanted, Madam President brought that up, I just wanted to let people know that are watching that we are moving, we have, uh, moved, and we know this is important. So, thank you for bringing that up, Madam President.
And normally, we have a launch of each component that we've, uh, and we didn't do a launch of that, so, um, but anyway, well, that's good, we have money for that, so. Um, just a couple of comments. I wanted to digress a little bit. You talked about the Dollar Lot program on Beekman, and just wondering about your, um, thoughts about expanding that in other communities.
I know that. I mentioned that at great risk, um, because one of the things I, I mentioned is that we want houses built wherever it's possible. And so, the, the motivation there was the impossibility of attracting, um, new home construction. But I will tell you that with our city ARP money, it is our goal to build on lots we own in those communities. I think, um, they're great, um, there's great opportunity there to reinvest in those neighborhoods through that program. But I think that, you know, that's a good example, you know, of something that we should consider, and, and, you know, I, I appreciate the challenge here overall of saying, "Hey, it's great what you've done so far, what's next?" You know, how are you gonna continue to improve and bring, um, new tools and be more responsive?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, because there are so many, um, homeowners that want to have the next property next to them, due to all that demolition that's going on, they'd rather have, expand for their family. But, um, I also wanted to make a comment that, you know, we can't expect Port Authority to solve all the woes of all the discriminant, discriminatory housing that's taking place, and you're just one tool in our toolkit. And so, we need to have other agencies and entities to combine and be as focused on trying to extinguish that discrimination that's been going on for, for many years. And my last comment, I guess, is for those that are asking questions or, or watching, hopefully, um, this, you know, people perish with, uh, due to the lack of knowledge. And so, some of your clarification hopefully will help some of those that knew the Port Authority was on this agenda, and they will learn something from what's been said. And also, it may generate more questions, but I thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much for having me today.
Madam President, let me, I want to thank you as well, and I think the reason that the land bank is so huge, as Commissioner Dreehouse talked about when we were at the legislature, it gives, and it's an enormous amount of power, because you don't have to pay taxes, you get to choose who gets the property. And so, it's different than the other agencies, a little bit different. Uh, you know, as you said, you manage like three different things. So, Port Authority just as Port Authority, you buy something, you probably gotta pay the tax on it, and all of the other nuances that come with it. If it's a, if you're, Port Authority acting as the land trust, no taxes, we also have the tools to help pay off your taxes. So, that's a different tool. So, um, I just appreciate you explaining to so many people that are watching, and also, it helped explain to me, because I want to get a clear understanding. We voted for it, uh, as, uh, Commissioner Dreehouse said, at the state, because we thought this would be a good tool. Uh, we heard from a lot of people with blighted properties and the foreclosure, uh, but we also have a similar crisis now with COVID and people, um, you know, a lot of times we don't ask after the recession, what happened to a lot of these businesses? What happened to a lot of these homeowners? And so, this, uh, uh, conference that I was at, well, on black homeownership that was put on by Xavier and some others, I believe the Port Authority too, uh, and the Assistant, Secretary of HUD, which says their focus is now on that is our only wealth. And so, you lose it, somebody die, then the family loses it, you got all these things on it, like you said, liens, tax, everything. Um, and that family doesn't get that house back, even though we redo it, replenish it, it's another group that comes in, and it's usually not that group. So, that's the kind of part that we gotta continue to, to work together on and look at other tools if they are available. You're right, land trust is not the end-all, but it's something to maybe look at.
And we've, we've got a couple of other things we're working on that I'm not allowed to talk about yet, but we'll have some more to share with you in the future, because we are-
Good.
...looking far and wide to come up with the best ones, because I agree with you, our, our black home, homeownership, I mean, it's bad everywhere, it's bad in the whole country, and, but it's certainly not good here. And, you know, I think we've got the ability to change that, and I'm gonna do everything I can to make that happen.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I appreciate all you've done in Evanston. Uh, we also know we have 48 and a half municipalities, I still say 49, but we got all of the municipalities. So, we want people, wherever you live in Hamilton County, no matter what your race is or gender is, you can afford to live here, and you can own your little piece of American dream. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, COVID-19 comprehensive report. Commissioner Kesterman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, um, let's see, if somebody could assist me in switching the slides, probably wouldn't be too relevant.
Uh-oh. Here comes Bridget.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they are.
Much better, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, um, things continue to head in the right direction for us, which is absolutely good news. Um, most of the slides that I'll show today, you're very familiar with. The last two slides are actually some new information that's, um, starting to get exciting and, and some changes. So, as far as COVID within our community today, we are at about 5,600 active cases of COVID. This is down 1,000 from last week when I presented to you. So, last week, we're at 6,600. As far as the, um, cases over the last seven days, we are at 155 today. Last week, we were at 187, so absolutely trending in the right direction, and, uh, we're happy to continue to see that, that positive, uh, trend. Percent positivity for the region is at 6.6%. Hamilton County is at 7%, and we are at about 2,500 tests, which is still great news. Folks are still getting tested and still coming out of the community when they're sick, so I'm happy to see that as well. The reproductive value for Hamilton County is 0.85, and for the region, we are at 0.87. And then, moving into hospitalizations, you know, this is a delayed indicator, but everything is continuing to head in the right direction. Today, we are at 336 individuals within our hospital systems, 112 in the ICU, and 90 individuals on ventilators. There's really no change in, uh, the data with regards to who is ending up in the hospital. We still are predominantly seeing those between the ages of 50 and 79 within our hospital systems. Breakthrough cases, when you look at a snapshot for our region, it's about, uh, 90% breakthrough cases, meaning 90 out of 100 people have not been vaccinated in our region's hospitals. The state of Ohio, um, is still pretty much statewide, we're in high level of transmission on the CDC's map. I put this red line here, I know it's hard to see up on the slide, but to transition to moderate, we have to drop below 50 cases per 100,000. Today, we are at 138 cases per 100,000. And then, I'll, I'll point out that moderate's kind of important. Everyone's so tired of wearing masks, and that, that move over to moderate is when the CDC changes their recommendation. If you're a moderate or low-spread community, uh, the recommendation is no longer, it's now, no longer strongly recommended to wear masks indoors. So, we're getting there, we're not there yet, um, but we're certainly heading in the right direction. So, that's, that's good news for our community as well. As far as vaccinations, um, really no change since I was here last week. For those over the age of 12, we're still at 70%. And for our total population, we keep edging closer and closer to that 58% threshold. So, now, a couple, a couple new updates and some exciting, exciting news. So, since I last met with you a week ago, we are now offering booster shots throughout, uh, the country, and here in Hamilton County certainly. The, um, it, you know, as health commissioner, it's confusing to follow what's allowed for booster shots, and I can only imagine the confusion for the public. It's extremely confusing. Generally speaking, if you're over 18 and you've been vaccinated, and you work in a profession that puts you at high risk, you are eligible for a booster. You may ask, what is a profession that puts you at high risk? Essentially, anything that you personally feel puts you at high risk could qualify. There's no requirement to show documentation out of clinic, so if you self-attest that you're at high risk, you are eligible. I note that you must be over 18 for all three vaccines for boosters. Pfizer and Moderna, if you're going to get a booster, it's recommended six months after your second shot, not six months after the 14 days after the, you know, you see the highest effective, effectiveness. It's 14 days after the second shot. And then, for the Janssen vaccine or the J&amp;J vaccine, it's two months after your initial dose. And that's, uh, the Janssen's a little different, it's for anyone over the age of 18, it's recommended that you get the, um, the booster shot. I've had a lot of questions, you know, should I mix and match? You're allowed to now, but should I? The CDC panel, um, actually indicated that you may mix and match, but they recommend that you stick with the same series. That said, I've read a lot of, um, differing opinions from medical professionals and others. It's really most likely coming down to a personal choice. I encourage folks to talk to their medical provider if they have one. Um, if they don't, I really think it comes down to what you're most comfortable with. Our clinics, all of the Hamilton County Public Health clinics, while we have it in stock as of today, we have all three vaccines, so all three are eligible, including at the 513 bus, all, all three vaccines are available. The second half of this slide talks about the FDA approval of the Pfizer vaccine for 5 to 11-year-olds. Today is the day that the FDA is meeting. We're anticipating that they recommend it, and I, I say that after they recommend it, it still then goes to the ACIP and the CDC, and then ultimately, the state of Ohio. It's a little different vial, because it's, it's the same medicine, but a different dosage. And so, there is a little logistics, uh, logistical issues that we have to work through, but we're anticipating in the next three weeks, nationwide, we'll see, uh, this vaccine available, which is exciting. Our team is gonna continue to work with schools and communities and make our way throughout Hamilton County, and there still are a whole host of providers, including Cincinnati Children's Hospital, who will be a key player in getting this vaccine out to the community. My last slide deals with a change that happened yesterday. The Ohio Department of Health changed quarantine guidance for in schools. The goal is really to keep kids in school. We know that quarantine has been complicated, it's confusing, and this stuff has changed literally every few months. The new changes effectively allow children to mask and stay, so in an in-school exposure, not, not when a child's exposed at home or at a party, but if they're in school, including recess, lunch, and they're exposed to a positive case of COVID, they can stay in school if they mask during their official quarantine time, self-monitor for symptoms, and immediately isolate if they, they start to feel sick. Um, so, this is exciting news. This is gonna keep a lot of kids in our classrooms. In addition, a lot of parents are concerned about their kids playing sports. Uh, the state has created a test-and-play portion of their quarantine guidance. Once again, it has to be an in-school exposure. The children can wear a mask, um, when they're not playing, uh, test on the first day of exposure, and test on day five to seven, and if they do those, those things, they can continue to play, uh, sports. So, those are, uh, two big changes. I continue to emphasize it only applies to in-school exposure. Um, I shared this example several times, but households are very easy for the spread of COVID-19, so if a mom or a dad or a child has COVID-19, the probability that every single person in that household gets sick is extremely high. It's a contagious disease, and even if you isolate in your own house, it spreads pretty easily. So, if one child gets sick with COVID, the other child who may be in the school environment is still required to quarantine. So, just an important distinction. That is all I have prepared. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, I have a comment, I'm just inquisitive about the information that we've received, um, not all scientific, but, um, our Hamilton County employees that are under the jurisdiction of the commissioners, it's less than 50% have been vaccinated. Um, so, it's troubling, uh, to me to hear that. So, my question primarily is, um, possibly, if we looked at mandatory testing, would that come from, and I don't know if Holly or, or Lori would, would that come from our board to make that happen? Would you, as a, as a commissioner, um, have to say that that could happen? How, how does that go? What's the protocol?
I would think it would be a board, um, action, a board and county commissioner action. As far as the tests, um, I would be happy to work with the Ohio Department of Health. They are the ones providing the tests for the mobile clinics and the libraries that we're giving away. I believe they're providing the tests for the Cincinnati Health Department to give to the city for their employee policy, so I could help, um, through that process, but it would be a county commissioner decision.
So, with that being said, um, I'm sure we'll talk about it, and I don't, I don't know if our other commissioners were aware of that, but it's not a real scientific, but from the information we got, for people that were asking for incentives for having been vaccinated, it was a, a low number. So, of course, we need to look at it and see what we want to do about that. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that, um, we want, we have a lot of partners, but today, we were at, uh, the YMCA, um, and, and Springfield Township, and there were, um, there was a lot of people coming to get the, uh, the booster, so the word is out, and now we can do the Moderna. Uh, we also had a lot of people, so people that could come and get the first shot, I believe, for what they were telling, telling me. Um, so, I just wanted to thank them. They were in partnership with the 513 relief bus and your, um, your department as well.
Absolutely.
So, I wanted to thank them, and, uh, just wanted to say that, um, ran into someone
And I just wanted to say that, ran into someone very special there, our Judge Gingerbuck was there, and she has been, she's a fighter, she's been fighting breast cancer, but she was coming there to get her booster. So I just wanted to say that the word is getting out, so thank you.
Wonderful. Just as a side note on that, yesterday, I don't actually know which clinic, but one of our clinics had a kind of a recent record, we had 100 and, close to 150 people vaccinated, majority of which were boosters. But, you know, for reference, most of my clinics right now range from anywhere from, on a very slow day, maybe 10 vaccines, mostly 30 vaccines, to maybe 60 vaccines. So 150, my, my nurses were busy. That's a good problem to have.
That's great. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President, thanks for being here, Commissioner. I just, I just want to remind folks that Test and Protect has an extensive list of all the places you can go to get the booster. I'm interested in my mom getting a booster here within the next couple of days, and so I was kind of sort, looking around and went to Test and Protect and saw, you know, just this huge listing of all the places you could go. Just to be clear, the one that you have at your office, is that open on a daily basis, really kind of during business hours? Is that right?
So it's getting colder, and we're kind of restrategizing how we're going to manage it, but through mid to end November, we will be located at 250 William Howard Taft, which is the main health department office in the parking lot, Monday through Friday, and we're open from about 8:30 a.m., actually, I'm sorry, from 8:00 a.m. till 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. It is, you know, as it's chillier, we're getting heaters and things to make it more comfortable. And then actually, our partnership with the Board of Elections was so great, we reached out to them, and after the election, after they get things kind of settled, we plan to move back into that location with our 250 William Howard Taft.
Oh, that's great. Do you know what the timing of that is?
I want to say it's mid to late November, I don't have the date. They've given us a date, I just don't, I don't know it.
We do have some connections over there.
Yep.
I'm just kidding. No, it's great that we've got these options, we've got the mobile options, we've got, but the stationary options too are something that can be counted on. You know, whenever you're available, just pop over and go get the booster. So it's great that we've got so many options for the folks that live in the county, so thanks for your work.
Absolutely. And if I could just reiterate, you know, right now, there are so many locations in Hamilton County that you can get the vaccine, thinking back to a year ago when we first opened, or I should say in January. You know, the Board of Elections was a critical resource, and we were busy all the time. None of our locations are busy, you can just walk up, it's really convenient. I had five or six staff today roll up their sleeves and go out and get their boosters without any wait. And you'll, you'll experience that whether it's at a public health clinic, maybe not the one that I referenced that was super busy. There might have been a little wait. But whether you're at a Walgreens or a Kroger's or a CVS or any of the public health clinics, they're really quick, they're easy and convenient.
Yeah, yeah, my mom told me, she, because I'm trying to get her out, right? I'm like, Mom, let's, let's go, let's get it done. And she had called Heart Pharmacy, which is a very small, local pharmacy, they're doing it. And so they're, to, you're correct that everybody and their brothers got the vaccine right now, so we just not, now we have to get the people to get out there and, and get the shot in the arms.
That's right.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And don't forget your flu shot, you can get it at the same time or whatever.
That's right, yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business that come before the commission?
Madam President, just want to remind people, voting is going on throughout Hamilton County. All of our municipalities have some election. We have early voting at the Board of Election going on right now, and we are going to 7:00 p.m. now. So 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then on this Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., but get there early because we got to watch those bingles. And then on Monday, November 1st, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they can go to our Board of Elections website to get those hours, but just wanted to let people know that, that we've extended those hours, and they can go to the Board of Elections and vote if they want to vote early.
Right, thank you. Anything? Okay, I wanted to thank Leslie for the colored copies, we don't want to take that for granted. It was nice being able to see the diagrams, and so thank you so much. Okay, I make a motion to close our staff meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.